Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here with us this evening. Today is Wednesday, June 12, 2024. My name is Councilman Amiko Hernandez, and I would like to call this Hybrid Public Hearing of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Five-Year Consolidated Annual Action Plan for CDBG, ESG, HOPWA, and HOME Grant Programs to Order. This public hearing is live on HPA TV's Xfinity Government Channel 96, Frontier Government Channel 6032. It will also be streamed via hpatv.org, the HPA TV Facebook page, and will be made available on the HPA TV YouTube channel. The Annual Action Plan addresses the intended use of HUD supported entitlement grants funds under the four formula programs covered in the city's five-year consolidated plan: Community Development Block Grant (CDBG), Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS (HOBOA), Emergency Solutions Grant (ESG), and the Housing Investment Partnership Program (HOM). The City of Hartford will submit its annual action plan for July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development (HUD) on or around July 10, 2024. The city's drafted annual action plan will be posted on the Central Grants Departmental website starting June 10, and will be available for review and comments for at least 30 days. The plan will also be available at City Hall Room 302 and Hartford Public Library in Albany and Parkville branches. All allocations are subject to adoption by the Hartford Court of Common Council and release of funds from HUD. These proposed activities and allocations will be posted on the Central Grants Departmental website. Any inquiries pertaining to the Neighborhood Assistant Program, please contact Cheryl Horowitz, Director of Office of Central Grants Administration at 860-757-9276, or via email at cheryl.horowitz@hartford.gov. Now, this part is important. I will now refer to the rules for tonight. Public hearings should be conducted in accordance with the following procedures: Each person wishing to address the council or committee thereof, show upon recognition by the presiding officer, give his or her name, address, and if he or she represents a group, and show, in addition, state for the record the name and address of said group or organization, and shall limit his or her remarks to five minutes. During the public hearing, there should be no debate by the council, although questions may be asked by the council to persons making such presentation. I would like to introduce my fellow colleagues present here this evening. To my right, I have Councilwoman Kelly Bilodou. She will also be the timekeeper for tonight. On the screen, we have Council President Shirley Surgeon. We also have Councilwoman Mally Rosado, Councilman Josh Meacham, and Councilman Alex Thomas. Now, I would like to give the floor to Ms. Cheryl Horowitz for her presentation before we begin for the public comments. Ms. Horowitz, the floor is yours. Can you try again?
Good evening, Councilwoman Hernandez and Councilwoman Bilodou. We're pleased to be here to present to you some of the information and background to the annual action plan to work on the year 2025, which is going to be part of the year of our final plan, and so make sure we can plan for the next part of it. So this is just an overview of what actually is happening right now. So the City of Hartford receives entitlement funds from HUD on a annual basis, and our services and programs that strengthen and serve the community.
Yeah, I can hear the crowd voice.
The City's funding is from HUD, and this is a third spending on municipalities. It's for Hartford, for several programs that we run. One is the community of the Rockland, which is running today, has an opportunity to be able to do the latest talk, who represents two plans, which is for Shuckles, and the home of the President of津津，which is Holland, and Pendleton, and Redwood. The city's consolidated plan, associated annual action plan, has had this four months. There's a consolidated plan for five years, and then finally, we do the election, and then we incorporate all these programs. This presentation will primarily focus on the city to partner with the community here. We are producing an annual action plan that follows the goal strategy that we set forward. The draft annual action plan, which is much greater than what we are actually doing here tonight, which is to discuss-
The allocations that have been made for the large portion of the funding, the allocation that we did get. But there is a larger draft annual action plan that talks about what the future plans are for the city, for the coming year, and mimics, in a way, what was originally planned five years ago, and that we're on the verge of starting to plan again for the next five years. That plan is posted on the website and will be there for at least 30 days to permit people to review and to have comments. The public comment is very, very important for HUD. This is one part of it, and there will be more coming, that we hope that people will come and contribute their impressions of the HUD annual action plan, and the program, and the progress that has been made. The timely submission of this annual action plan and consolidated plan are required by HUD as a condition of releasing the next year's funds. So that has to be produced and submitted first before we will get the funds for the next year. Normally, the plan is due 45 days before the start of the program year, which is always on July 1. But this year, because of the congressional budget being delayed, it's pushed the deadline out. So the fact that we are meeting when we are now, and that the final recommendations hopefully will be on June 24 or 25, allows us to be operating within the guidelines that HUD has set. So we are requesting that the council do vote at its meeting on June 24. In addition to this hearing, representatives present information to applying organizations at least four times during a year. Comments from the community are solicited through these public hearings and are also available to be submitted via email, phone conversations, any way that it makes it easy for people to talk to us about their impressions, their senses of what the city should be doing and could be doing going forward. So in addition to today, there will be two additional public comment sessions on July 2. One will be a remote session on Zoom, and the link is on our website right now, and also at 5:30 here in City Hall in the green room. So the way this all starts is in January, where we solicit applications for projects. We put out the application, and we submit, we ask for submissions online. And then the staff in my office, of whom Ronnie Vasquez is here tonight, confirms eligibility, assembles panels to review and assess the submissions, and compiles the evaluations and the panelist scores. To be eligible, an activity must meet one of three national objectives. So we spend some time in looking through the applications to just basically confirm that they are either benefiting low or moderate income persons, eliminating slum or blight, or meeting an urgent need. And that third one is generally reserved for real crises and so arising from disaster. So we generally don't expect to see proposals on those coming up on a regular basis. For HUD, all activities that are proposed must be eligible. There's a whole gamut of things that do fall into what is eligible, and these are just an example of some of them. But there are also another category of things which are ineligible, and they too have kind of parameters around them, but they include things like purchasing of construction equipment. Construction is possible, but not construction equipment. We generally don't fund operating and maintenance expenses of organizations. We don't fund political activities, civic engagement, lobbying, or income payments to individuals. And that sometimes creates a problem when we look at things like stipends and whether or not we can actually pay for something like that. Funding, HUD regulations prohibit the payment of general operating support to nonprofits, and funding must only reimburse documented costs of providing direct service. So that's largely what it is. There are some ways to fund other activities if they don't take up too much of the portion that the agency is asking for funding. We here in Hartford kind of divide up the projects that we fund into two categories: public service and non-public service. The non-public service category is amorphous, and so we're actually in the process of making that more descriptive so that people do understand what fits into that. But generally, public service is direct service to low and moderate income peoples. Examples are, and you can read them. But non-public service falls into a couple of buckets, and they are primarily about things around housing, housing counseling, housing, and actually, a lot of housing counseling, if it's not associated with construction, is considered a public service. Things get very complicated in the HUD realm. But in general, it does involve some forms of construction, as well as economic development and income growth in the form of things that do create jobs and retain jobs. And all of this is set forth and has to be inside the consolidated plan. So if we exclude some categories in the plan, then even if a group proposed to do that activity, they could not be funded, or it would have more difficulty in being funded in this consolidated plan. So we go through process improvements every year, and sometimes that's very frustrating to people, and we apologize for that, but that's the only way we can get better. We are learning as we go along. HUD learns as they go along. The fact is, is that every year, sometimes our contracts are delayed because there are additional requirements that HUD proposes, and that we are required to insert into that contract. And so that takes a whole amount of time to make sure that they are inserted correctly and that we're following their regulations. We always try to improve, and last year, we instituted a system whereby, once the award letters go out, people can immediately, with a link provided, go onto our open forums website and start to revise their proposal. Inevitably, and you'll hear about this in a second, we cannot, and we do not have enough funds to fund everybody fully at what their requests were. And so we have done in the past some paring down and portioning what we can actually give to an organization. In doing that, it means that everybody that gets an award different from what they had requested will have to revise their budgets, will have to kind of re-alter what they are requesting for funding. So we now have a way that people can start that relatively quickly. As you know, if we do fund, if you do make the decision by July, by June 25th, that's five days away from when the next year starts. And so what we're trying to do is expedite how we get this thing going, and so some projects can actually begin right away. We have scoring rubrics and data collection, and those things are all updated on an ongoing basis. But it has helped for more consistent scoring and increasing the accuracy as we've done it. The materials, as you know, are online, and I appreciate your kind of work. The materials, as you know, are online, and I appreciate your kind of working with us to access them and appreciate and would appreciate any comments you have on whether or not any of that was cumbersome, and if you have any suggestions for how to make access to that material better. So panel members are chosen. This is our review committee, and they are chosen for their subject matter expertise and their knowledge and background related to HUD service delivery or service delivery in general in the areas that we fund in the appropriate sectors. They are drawn from community-based organizations, city agencies, and any interested Hartford residents that feel that they could contribute to an evaluation process of these proposals. We welcome referrals to the process and have gotten in the past referrals from the council, and we welcome that going forward. What we found, what we have this year, a little summary of, we had 20 reviewers signed up and did our reviews, and 60% of them were Hartford residents. They came, as you can see, from various professional backgrounds. In the evaluation of each application, panelists are asked to consider the need, urgency, and impact of the requested program, the capacity of the organization to administer the program, and you're going to hear why that's really important, the ability to measure and report performance and outcomes, the ability to maintain accounting systems to manage these federal funds, the sustainability of these programs, whether or not if HUD funds them or not funds them, will they be able to continue, and is there any leveraging of support? As HUD grantees, the city is responsible for selecting the right subrecipients for the community and supporting them through their funding cycle. Administrative and fiscal capacity are both critical attributes. Agencies that can efficiently manage their funds and submit timely documentation, reporting on their spending and outcomes, show stewardship of HUD's resources. This is what we look for in the candidates that we are funding. Without administrative and fiscal capacity of its subrecipients, the city is at risk of losing funding by not spending down its resources in a timely way. Later on in the presentation, there's some slides that I'm not going to go over, but I urge you to read, that look at this concept of timeliness of expenditures that we are required to do, and that jeopardizes when that doesn't occur, jeopardizes our future Another area that makes for that timeliness issue to become, come into the forefront is when we get and receive inadequate documentation of expenditures and incomplete accomplishments. So we really are trying to work with our subrecipients to get them to a point where all of this is just second nature and can be done in a pretty efficient way. You're going to hear in a second about the fact that we have this year reserved about $100,000 of administrative funds to fund technical assistance to both internally to our departments as well as externally to the agencies that we are funding to help them to get to a point where these requirements are not as onerous as they appear. This is a kind of a running history of the funding for CDBG Home, ESG, and Hoppla. You can see the difference between last year and this year was a 3% drop for the CDBG. Home took a bigger hit, but I think that they are getting home ARP funds that might counter some of that, and the other two programs just were impacted a small amount. This slide just shows you some of the other constraints that we operate under. The category that has the most applications in it is called public service. Only 15% of the total allocation that we get can go to that fund, can go to those types of projects. And so we are always battling with people who, the large majority, there were like 33 applications, who are trying, who are vying for that money and have very, very, you know, interesting projects, but that we can't fund at the levels and that we have to, and you'll hear in a second about what we're trying to do here. Up to 20% of the funding is available for admin activities to run the entire program. That's not admin for any one particular activity, but it is possible that any one activity can use a small portion of their funding for some admin activities, and we do allow So this is kind of a summary of some of the ways that the monies were allocated differing between this year and last year. So our allocation was $3,551,000. The next line shows you additional funds that we get to use in certain ways. We cannot use them for public service. We're still restricted to use the, only the allocation, the $3,551, 15% or less of that can go to public service. But we did add additional funds that we were able to use for the non-public service sector, and that monies, those monies included funds that because of HUD's analysis of us in the prior years, basically said you need to spend more of your money down more quickly, and so what we did was we made some judgment calls on how to actually do that, and so we were pulling funds from projects that were not going anywhere and that were not using their funds into projects that we think are going to go forward much quicker and spend those monies. That's in that $4 million. So the next money is, we're basically looking at $497,000 for the public service. The next line is that $100,000 of admin money that we're giving for technical assistance to hopefully improve everybody's understanding of how HUD functions. The next line is city, some of the city projects, and what you're seeing here for the rest of this are the city projects. So we not only fund external agencies, but we fund important projects for the city itself. So that non-public service city commitments include some of those, include those funds that we are allocating this year. It also, the gaps that you see there are that we are not funding some things this year, one because it turns out that the actual use of it was not bona fide HUD-approved usage, so we had to kind of work around that, and another one because we're using a different source of money to spend down the monies that we need to do. But the remaining on here are projects that the city has determined historically to be ones that they want to invest funds in and so have. For example, blight remediation. These monies go for the blight that is present in many parts of the city, and the monies will be going to inspectors so that they can perform inspections in those areas and get citations out and get these blighted areas remedied. Another category that's in this year is the parks and recreation centers, and for that, we just formed, you just formed, a new department for sports and recreation, and in light of the needs of that department, these funds will be going to repairing and rehabilitating some of the rec centers that are throughout the city, and so that, you know, things like ADA compliance is going to, monies are going to go to that, monies are going to go to we do floors that are cracking and in need of repair. We are also funding energy efficiency improvements, and for that, we're going to go directly, we're short-circuiting this and going directly to the contractors to work with residents of the city in either rental properties or in homeownership situations to get them energy efficiency improvements, weatherization, things like that. Additionally on this thing is the park fill, Wi-Fi extension. We had funded a nice portion, $800,000, to start the work of free Wi-Fi, which was the vision of the prior mayor, and ran out of monies for that, and so there are areas that are still yet to be done, and so we are contributing, we are proposing to contribute to that to do another one of, I think, two more areas to get free Wi-Fi, in this case, in the park fill area. So the landscape of what happened this year was we had 33, so now we finished with all the cities, all the city projects that we're proposing, and these are the projects that are proposed by external applicants to either work in public service or non-public service. So we received 33 external applications requesting $1,235,000, and 12 external applications requesting $1,400,000. The next part of that is the operating part. What you can see is that for public service, the request to available funds is 2.5 times the amount available. So the requests were 2.5 times what we had to give out, and so you can see what our dilemma In addition to that, the CDBG allocation is 3% less this year and has continued to decline since 2021. So the past strategy that has been used for the funding has been to fund most everybody that came to us, but at a lower amount. Sometimes those awards became, in a way, unrealistic. They were so low that it was very clear that the agency could hardly really use them to get very much, very many results that would be meaningful. Last year, we had the experience of funding one agency for $1,000. So you can imagine what that must have felt like to that agency who put in a sizable amount to run a program and then be funded for $1,000. HUD has given guidance, it's just guidance, but it's given us guidance to say that we should be funding at levels that have meaningful impacts. And so as a result of that, this year, we made the decision to not fund everyone and to have five agencies which did not receive any funding, and that we funded based upon the higher scores and did percentages of, of, used their scores to give percentages of what their ask was and balance out the allocations that way. So that is the presentation. Let me, we can do questions and comments or just go on to the presentations. In those slides, here's all of our contact information if you need to get us. Thank you very much for your patience and for listening to this.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Horowitz, for your presentation. Before we open the floor for the, for the public to begin their, their comments, I'd like to know if any of my council colleagues on the screen or here in person have any questions for Ms. Horowitz. Due to the significant number of people on Zoom, I may not be able to see you on the screen, so if you are a council member, please just pick up at any given time, since I may not be able to see if you raised your hand. Any council members have any questions to Ms. Horowitz?
Through you, Mr. Chair. This is Councilwoman Rosado, and I do not have any questions. Just want to thank Cheryl for her thorough presentation.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, hearing none, I'd like to thank again Ms. Horowitz for your presentation, and I, at this point, I will like to remind everyone that you have up to five minutes. You don't have to use all the five minutes, but you have up to five minutes to speak. I will go in order in which it was, we received your request via email, and then I will go to those folks that sign up in person when you walked in today. It is important, though, that if you are speaking and you had not signed up, at the end, when I call for anybody that didn't sign up to speak, that you actually stay here so you could actually sign up. We would like to have in record, since the administration needs to have this for their backup, who was here in person speaking. So I will start now by calling the first name on the list, and the first person is Lily Alexander, are you on the screen today? Okay, I'll move on to the second person on the list. I have Janet Fremuth.
I'm here with my colleague, Bob Scherer. Thank you for this opportunity. I am from Middletown, Connecticut. Our Hartford office is 250 Constitution Plaza in Hartford. For 45 years, Children's Empowerment has recruited, trained, and managed volunteers to serve as guardian alibitems in court to support hundreds of abused and neglected children statewide each year. While DCF caseworkers have upwards of 30 cases to manage and attorneys have many more, our volunteers take on one or two cases at a time. We are cresting support for our efforts to recruit additional volunteers to serve as guardian alibitems and to help maintain our cases in Hartford. The leading cause of abuse and neglect is poverty and substance abuse. Hartford, like any city, has its share of both. CIP receives less than half of its budget from state funding, and we rely heavily on the fundings from the cities and other funders so that we can continue to provide this much needed service to the many children we serve each year. We take 100% of the cases assigned to us. If you remember nothing else, please know that the volunteer is the one voice whose sole allegiance is to speak up for the child's best interest while simultaneously monitoring a child's ongoing safety and standing by the child as they endure court trials, motions, and hearings. Our volunteers ensure that potential barriers that could otherwise impede the child's path to safe and permanent home are removed as quickly as possible. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Fremuth. Before I continue, please I remind everyone to keep your Zoom on mute until you are called, and then after you're done, then please mute yourself back so that way there's no interruptions and we could have a better flow of the meeting. Third person to call, Laura O'Keefe. Laura O'Keefe, thank you.
My name is Laura O'Keefe. I am the Director of the Financial Opportunity Center at the Village for Families and Children. We are located several locations here in Hartford, but I am located at 450 Church Street. I am here this evening to express our appreciation for being considered for CDBG funding and to speak briefly about the impact that financial stability and wealth-building programs have in this community. The Village is the lead organization for the Regional Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, or VITA, and in partnership with our local United Way, our footprint spans the central and northeastern region. In Hartford alone, this invaluable resource has touched over 1,300 people in 2022, and in 2023, we were at over 2,700 families. You may be asking, why free tax preparation? How does VITA actually change lives? Well, the EITC, or Earned Income Tax Credit, can be worth up to 10% of a family's adjusted gross income for the year, and access to credits like the Child Tax Credit, education credits, and the like help to lift families and children out of poverty each year. Additionally, these dollars are reinvested into our community, supporting our local small businesses and our tax base. When you factor in the wraparound services like those found within the Financial Opportunity Center and the Village as a whole, including one-on-one financial and personal empowerment coaching as well as behavioral and mental health services, we drive our members toward meaningful, meaningful outcomes and real change. Roughly 250 members were enrolled in the Financial Opportunity Center in fiscal year 2023, and of the members who have participated in two or more financial coaching sessions, 40% have increased their net income, 44% have increased their net worth, and nearly 60% have increased their FICO scores. And out of those members who have participated in two or more career coaching sessions, 74% have been placed in jobs at an average hourly rate of $20.30. at an average hourly rate of $20.36. 92% of those placed in those jobs have remained in those jobs for over, for 90 days. And over 50% have remained steady for 180 days. CDBG funding will help us to continue the work of moving Hartford families from poverty to financial stability. Thank you again for your time, for the opportunity to provide these valuable services to our community and for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Keefe. See, I got your last name right now. O'Keefe.
Excellent. Thanks.
Thank you. Next to speak is Mark Jenkins.
Good evening. Mark Jenkins, founder and CEO, Connecticut Harm Reduction Alliance. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on a topic that really is probably not the most favorable as we talk about, what we put in for, for this CDBG funding is for our SORT program through the organization, which is the Syringe Outreach and Response to help remove some of the unsightly waste that is deposited throughout the city as a result of illicit substance use. It is something that has, since COVID, has increased exponentially in how people use throughout the city. This is an issue and has been an issue. And we routinely, you know, receive calls from members. And again, thank you to, you know, the members of the City Council that have, and the city for supporting this work. And it was actually supported through ARPA funding. And that funding has exhausted. So we put in for about $80,000 to continue that. It looks to be funded through this at about a quarter of that amount, which I understand funds are tight. And we will match, I will say that, match those funds. But with that 20, it does not allow us to at least put a full-time staff person or a part-time staff person in this case. And the individuals that we use, which are also members of the community, volunteers, if you will, that we stipend to do some of this work. So whenever the city calls and says, hey, there's, we spotting some waste in the park, can you go over here? When we get calls from the state that says there are certain areas where we see waste, then we dispense, you know, we dispatch teams to those areas. We go down into the wooded areas and various parks where we know drug use takes place and remove much of those items. So then again, city workers can come behind us and clean out those areas. Often times, it is dangerous, you know, for them to pick some of that stuff up as they don't have the correct materials to safely dispose of, of that, of that waste. So again, while this is not a very popular subject or topic, it is very much necessary to remove this waste from areas throughout the city. I ask that the council consider, you know, increasing that amount. I'm not asking for the full amount because again, I will meet, I will meet the city halfway with that. This is just for this particular, this particular part of our operation is, does not come through any of other, our funded programs. However, I can use staff to help along with it. But to continue to operate at the level we do just expressly, not for the extended other services that we were doing as a result of ARPA and the personnel we had attached to this, but just to mainly focus on being able to put those teams out there and make sure that they can remove that waste and keep it out of city streets. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Next to speak is Tony Callas.
Good afternoon, Councilman Hernandez, Councilwoman Villadue, and also to all the esteemed council people on the screen. As you know, every year, we look forward to treating our kids and our parents and our supporters to the democratic process, this public hearing for community development block grants. And this year, we were extra looking forward to it. Because with your help from last year, we actually had quite a banner year. We actually served over 109 children from Hartford, children and youth, boys and girls ranging 8 to 17. We served another 45 from Greater Hartford. They enjoyed our typical mix of comprehensive services. Obviously, we use Olympic amateur boxing as our central hook and our central vehicle. But then we surround our kids, as you're probably aware, with tutoring, mentoring, life skills, outward bound trips, recreational trips, and of the such, as well as, of course, boxing competitions. What we were especially proud of, that I think we mentioned last year when we came in front of you, was due to the, the mental health crisis and mental health and wellness needs of our kids, especially coming out of COVID, we decided to take two of our locker rooms and get rid of the lockers and bring in actually a board-certified psychologist and an LCSW. And we embarked on a campaign to basically screen and assess all 100-plus of our kids for anxiety, depression, trauma-related psychiatric illnesses, and also provided seminars to our kids and to their parents to try to de-stigmatize mental health and wellness. In addition to that, we bought in yoga instructors, meditation people, and others to show our kids alternative and healthy ways, as well as their boxing workout, to deal with stress and everything else. Tonight, we are especially excited because last Tuesday night, we were honored by Leadership Greater Hartford with the Polaris Community Award, which I bring here before you today. And the gist of my speech was thanking Leadership Greater Hartford because they're allowing me to thank everyone else. My kids, my incredible volunteers, my staff, my parents. Had them all stand up. They received a round of applause. And then I went on to do a little speech about it takes a village. But my take was it takes more than a village. It takes many, many villages. And I made sure that I mentioned the great support that you guys always give us year in and year out from the City Council. Because we would not have this without you, without question. And we will not have pulled off such a great year. To my surprise, the next morning when I woke up, I was contacted by one of my administrators and informed that unfortunately, we did not get recommended, as we typically do every year for our community development block grant that we, of course, rely on greatly. So we come to you today as underdogs. And that's a position that we've been in before. As you know, we've been around for 35 years. I would say for 20, good 25, we've been underdogs. So we're making a plea that we be reconsidered based on our merits and our reach for, to be added to the community development block grant list. And I have one of our great moms, Mrs. Delgado, who's going to say a few words towards us as well.
Good evening. My name is Katiria Delgado. And I'm here today to share the incredible impact of how the Koba Boxing Gym has transformed my son's life over the past year. As a single mother of two, I know firsthand the challenges our youth face, especially those from undeserved communities. The work Koba is doing to transform the lives of these young people is invaluable. When my son first started at Koba, I'll admit I was a little worried. As a parent, you always want to make sure your child is in a safe, caring environment. From the moment we walked through those doors, I knew this was something special. The head coach, Johnny Callas, put my mind at ease right away. He didn't just see my son as another kid in the program. He saw him as a whole person with his own unique needs and goals. Coach Callas took the time to sit down with me to really understand what my son was going through and what we were hoping to achieve. And let me tell you, he has gone above and beyond. I've seen him firsthand how Coach Callas has been so intentional and personalized in ways he works with my son, as well as all the other kids at the gym. He is so genuine and easy to talk to. Honestly, I wish he was my personal therapist. But it's not just Coach Callas. All the coaches at Koba work together as a team to support these kids. They're always there making sure my son and the others have what they need, both in the boxing ring and in real life. That includes helping them with their schoolwork, too. The coaches understand that academic success is just as important as athletic success. So they make sure the kids get the tutoring and homework help they need. What's been so impressive to me is the level of wraparound care and resources available at Koba. They have a psychologist and a social worker on staff so that the kids can get counseling and emotional support whenever they need it. They have fun field trips and community events, which have helped my son feel like he's part of something bigger, but most importantly, like this is a family. On top of that, the coaches themselves are such incredible role models. They've all come from their own backgrounds and challenges, and they use those experiences to motivate and inspire the kids. My son has told me how Koba has taught him to fight hard but stay humble, to have self-control and to support his fellow athletes. My son's mental health and emotional growth has been most inspiring to witness. The Koba Boxing Gym isn't just a place to train. It's a community, a family, that is truly invested in the well-being of every single kid who walks through those doors. And for that, I will forever be grateful. Thank you all for being here today and for supporting this amazing organization. And I can't wait to see what the future has in store for the young champions of Koba. And I can't wait for when my daughter is old enough to attend Koba as well. Thank you.
Just for the record, before you continue, each of the folks that John Callas is calling up, they already signed up. So each of them get the five minutes since they are individual signers on the list. So you may continue.
Thank you, Councilmen. Thank you so much for that. That was so moving and so appreciative. We have such wonderful young men and women. And yes, again, I took this opportunity on Tuesday to thank this to the incredible people, clinicians, coaches, volunteers, moms, dads, that really make up the Koba family and make it special. As we move into next year, we are going to continue with our mental health services. And I'm excited to also say that our next big, our next big campaign is actually to assist all of our kids and to assist them and open them up to all the post-secondary opportun, post-secondary educational and otherwise opportunities that they may have when they graduate from high school. I have brought in a dear friend of mine, Ms. Pam Krampford, who was a DCF colleague with myself. And we're incredibly excited to have her. She's responsible for getting at least 1,000 DCF kids into college. And she's crafted an incredible program that will go for the next year and a half, exposing our kids from middle school to seniors in high school, to all the opportunities that they could possibly take advantage of, from college to, from college to civil service, to the trades, to becoming a fireman, so on and so forth. And then it's our goal where Pam is going to assist. And we're going to assist our juniors and seniors to identify where they want to go and basically help them to do that because we all know what a tough process it is. So we're going to continue onward. We can't do it without you. This is without question, as much as yours as it is mine. And we ask for your consideration to get back on the team and greatly look forward to your answer.
Thank you, Mr. Callas. And thank you for all the young people that showed up tonight. This is part of what the democratic process looks like. This is another way of fighting for what you believe in. So thank you all for taking the time to come in here and support, you know, and advocate for yourself. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hernandez. Thank you, Councilwoman Villadue. Thank you, council people.
All right, so next to speak, we have here Art Philman. Yeah, that's fine. Since I don't have your name, may you repeat your name? And you are, your position at International Hartford?
Hi, my name is Shelby Young, and I'm the Board Chair of International Hartford. Our mission is to empower and support immigrants and minority entrepreneurs. We teach them how to fish versus giving them fish. We, we are teaching them on how to stand on their own. We are bringing about intergenerational wealth. Why? Because the city residents who are business owners earn true times those who work for others. Our objective is to double the number of city residents, business owners, from 5% to 10%. Our four programs, one, Business Counseling and Capital Access, Grants and Loans. Our Own migrant, Micro Grant to 15 city businesses. Financial Literacy, Classes for 30 Parents. Our One World Market Food Truck Court at Hartford Hospital for 12 ethnic vendors. The total clients, vendors, grantees is 100. 55% are West Indian and African-American. 29 Latino. 10% Caucasian. 3% Middle Eastern. And 3% Asian. All low to medium income. Nearly all residents, all city residents and businesses are both. Types of businesses. Restaurants, retailers, clothesmakers, packaged food manufacturers, juice bars, builders, beauty and nail parlors, inventors, food trucks, IT entrepreneurs, home care and nursing providers. Examples of success. New or refurbished restaurants on Albany Avenue, Full Flavor Jamaican, and on Park Street, the former Camerio and reopening of La, La Casita. Equipment food manufacturing and inventory for Swift Factory tenants. Interior renovations of African Clothing Store, Juice Bar, Barber and Beauty Parlor. Launches of online bookstore store and a West Indian food truck. CDBG costs per business owner helped $1,100. Effects. More entrepreneurship, job creation, taxes paid, retail vacancies filled. Present CDBG support level is $110,000. 2024-25 ASK is $125,000, a 14% increase. One of the things I want to make sure that we actually are clear on. We are helping small businesses. We are creating small businesses. Most of some of the problems that they're having is the lack of understanding the paper language. It depends on what areas it is. Understanding a W-9 is not easy, you know? Understanding what a 1099. And what we're doing is helping them to zero in and help educate them on our paper language. And that's really very, very important. So I'm hoping that you guys really think about it. So I'm hoping that you guys really think about it. It's good to be able to help these families, have their families actually see, like the children see their parents, become entrepreneurs, and also to watch them employ others and be role models to others. So I hope you guys take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Next to speak is Kevin Murray.
Good evening to the councilbody. Kevin Murray here, 201 Terry Road and the owner of Woodland Fish Market, 326 Sargent Street. I am here today to speak on behalf of International Hartford, asking the councilbody for their increased support to this organization. A few years ago, I left employment from this fine organization. Councilwoman Bilidou and I used to sit in the back and write each other notes for the way in which we think policies should be written, so I am honored today to be sitting in front of you, ma'am, while you are making the policies. I took upon myself a journey that truly is bigger than myself. I opened a fish market that was in existence for 24 years, and I'm hoping to add another 24 years to that. I reached a point where I confronted that it's more than myself, and International Hartford stepped in, and since then, the journey has been a lot easier. There's a bit more than just business that's going on at 326 Sargent Street. So I left my desk here, typing 34 words a minute, to go now skill fish and gut fish. Something is definitely happening there, as I noticed that the neighborhood is changing. That area was infested with drug use. It was one of our city streets that was once blocked off, violent. Our HPD officers were known to be getting hurt and punched. So it was just one of those places that truly required change. I took it upon myself to be that change, because at some point, we have to take some type of action into all these big dreams and programs that we think can change our neighborhoods. And now the neighborhood is looking to me to continue this change. Residents feel comfortable walking out of their homes, walking up the street to get fresh food and something to eat. They feel a little bit more safe. International Hartford is helping me with the logistics to making that happen. I am a true example of their mission, an immigrant with the big dream. We're naturally entrepreneurs. And so, we make moves on these ventures, but we really don't have the resources or access to the resources to make this dream come true. International Hartford is making this dream come true for me and my family and the entire neighborhood in North Hartford. So I ask for your continued support, and through experience from working here and now being on the other side of the platform, I could say I see the good that this organization has been doing. I reached out for them because I know it is a trusting organization, and they've been helping so many migrants like myself for so long. So I ask the councilbody today for their continued and increased support to International Hartford. Thank you and have a blessed day.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Next to speak, Carlos Figueroa.
My name is Carlos Figueroa. I am the new owner of Roland Dish on Park. For seven years, I owned a food truck and International Hartford Award Marketing. Last year, I bought the closing of Comerios. I'm the owner of that. Thanks for Hartford International for helping me out, complete the applications, the legal work, the hard work that I can do, and they're making it easier for me to have this restaurant going on soon. And I want to thanks Art and Richie, Richie's not here, and you too, ma'am, for helping me out and made it easy for me, because I didn't know where to start. So they helped me do applications and just made my life so easy. So I want to thank them for helping me out. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Figueroa. Next to speak, Brittany or Brittany Rio.
My name is Brittany, I'm the owner of Head Over Berries on Blue Hills Avenue, and I also have a location in Parkville Market. I was awarded a grant and was able to add marketing aspects and refrigerator work tops for my location, something that I didn't have before. This was able, with these funds, I was able to add more to my menu than I ever imagined and fulfill a need in the community to provide nutritious food and smoothies, acai bowls, wellness shots. We were able to add toast, we were able to add protein bars, vegan treats, gluten-free treats, all of the things that we weren't able to in the beginning when we first had the vision of the business. It has opened a doorway also for me to be able to reach out to schools in the community and teach the youth about healthy options in the community. I have both of my locations in marginalized communities where healthy options aren't always a choice. I'm surrounded by package stores, Chinese food. I'm surrounded by fast food chains, so bringing something like this to the community is something that was very much so needed, and with the funds, we were able to provide more of those options. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next to speak is, hopefully I pronounced this correctly, Jawaby Simpney. It's still working. All right. Next to speak, Maria Olmino. I will be translating for Maria, so my words are her words.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Maria Olmino, y estoy aquí para dar las gracias al señor Art por todo el apoyo que le ha brindado a la Casita del Sabor.
Okay, good evening. My name is Maria, and I'm here to support Art and say thank you to him for all the support that he's given to La Casita Restaurant.
Este año que pasó tuvimos muchos problemas con el gire, algunas paredes y algunos equipos de cocina, y ellos, con todo su equipo de trabajo, nos han ayudado mucho. Gracias a eso vamos a volver a abrir muy pronto.
Last year, we had a lot of issues with the walls, the heating, and some of the other issues with the business, and thanks to their help, we've been able to kind of get back on track and we're going to continue, you know, with our business.
Y estoy realmente muy agradecida con todo el equipo de Art que nos ha apoyado y ningún momento nos han dejado solos.
And I'm very thankful to the team that Art has put together, because they've always been with us, they've never given up on us, and they're always there.
Thank you.
Next to speak, Kamani Harrison.
I got to adjust this for me. Hello, everyone. My name is Kamani Harrison. I'm the owner of The Key Bookstore for the last seven years. It's a tech-enabled bookstore and community platform for book lovers to stay immersed in reading culture. I want to start off by saying, oh, we're headquartered at 1429 Park Street in the Parkville Market, in the Parkville area in Hartford. And I want to thank International Hartford for their recent grant. I was introduced to International Hartford with Erwin, who is a publisher here in Hartford that I had connected with years ago at the beginning of my journey with the bookstore. And although we're not a physical location, and that's not our focus, we have customers here or people that are familiar with The Key Bookstore brand online and here sitting with us today. I wanted to say a note about the budget that I see here in Hartford for community building. This kills me, because I've been more supported financially and things like that in other communities like New Haven and things like that, that are really putting a lot of funds to grow businesses, especially targeting minority-owned businesses. And in Hartford here, if we want to keep growing our minority-owned businesses, we have to invest more. They're asking for two and three times more to make a real impact on our businesses and the impact that we're having in our community. I wanted to say that in 2024, we have now been voted best of Hartford's bookstores, second runner-up, and we're not a physical location. Thank you. I think that goes to show that impact looks differently for the community with innovative and different business models. And I was taking a look at the panels that are judging these applications. I had to fight for receiving a portion of what I asked for with the International Hartford grant, because, like I mentioned, when I went to the Small Business Development Conference that you guys had at the Hartford Yard Goat Stadium last year, that there's a true disconnect with the innovation happening on the ground level in our minority communities and the investment opportunities that are being presented. So it takes, you know, making these relationships and connections and getting to know people to allow these things to continue to flow. So I just wanted to say that, yeah, we really need to, for the next five years, that should be 10 million, 15 million. I saw that the governor, while I was in Stanford, I also just was in the Yale Innovation Summit, Key Bookstore had an e-poster up. The governor just announced an innovation fund of $100 million, and the literacy rates here in not only New Haven but in Hartford are at 22% in our schools. So education, opportunities to reimagine what it looks like to connect with a book, you have a company right here that's trying to continue to build here in Hartford. So we need a serious investment and respect and attention put towards companies. I've been through the Reset Accelerator Program as well, based here in Hartford. They were one of my first technical assistance opportunities. I've been through the University of Hartford Women's Business Center as well, when I first started my business seven years ago. So I'm invested in building and growing my company here in Hartford, so I'm happy for this opportunity to be able to speak to you all, and thank you guys so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Next to speak, Clinton Triumph.
I am deeply honored to stand before you today amidst a vibrant heartbeat of the city of Hartford to express my gratitude and excitement for the unwavering support I've received from International Hartford. Their dedication to uplifting minority-owned businesses has been a beacon of hope and inspiration for me, helping to shape and develop my entrepreneurial dreams. My name is Clinton Viber Triumph, and I'm a multicultural, first-generation dual citizen. My mother hails from the beautiful island of Trinidad, while my father brings rich cultural heritage of Guyana. Growing up in Bloomfield and spending much of my adult life in the greater Hartford area, I have been shaped by the unique tapestry of experiences and culture that this community has to offer. I navigated the West Hartford Public School System and attended both Seventh-day Adventist and Catholic schools, all which have enriched my understanding of faith and community. My upbringing was deeply influenced by my parents, both entrepreneurs, my father in accounting and my mother in real estate. Their entrepreneurial spirit has inspired me to pursue my own business ventures with passion and integrity. As a Black and queer individual, coming to terms with my identity has been a journey. Thanks to the love and support of my family and friends, I have found acceptance and pride in who I am. Yet, like many, I continue to face challenges in a world that's not always accepting. The anxiety and depression that often accompanies these challenges are a testament to the resilience and strengths required to navigate our culture. My family has been my rock, demonstrating acceptance, love, tolerance and compassion. Their willingness to learn about sexual identity and orientation has been a source of immense support. Our home has always been a hub of hospitality and culture, with a special place for my mother's love of coffee and my husband's passion for tea. In October 2021, I married my husband, a stylish, humble and charismatic and creative individual, also from Guyana, right at the City Hall, actually. His presence in my life has been a profound source of joy and inspiration. Recently, I graduated from CT State Community College Capital in June 2024 with a degree in business and hospitality. I also have a certification in early childhood education and social service assistance. These achievements are just stepping stones towards my dream of contributing to our communities through ethical and conscious business practices. The diverse culinary landscape of Hartford has always fascinated me. However, I noticed the lack of restaurants and cafes in the municipal area, a gap I'm eager to fill. People here crave practical, sustainable and healthy food options, and I believe there is a vast market to support such ventures. With experiences working in restaurants and cafes across the tri-state area and abroad, I've developed a deep appreciation for the culture of cafes when ran ethically and with passion. These spaces can become community hubs, and I'm a strong advocate for the Working Families Party in Connecticut, championing good jobs, ethical business practices, fair politics, and a positive work culture. My vision is to create a space that embodies these values, a cafe that is as carbon-neutral as possible, providing hospitality and comfort to all. I'm thrilled to partner with International Hartford to bring my vision to life. My dream is to create a space that not only serves food and beverages, but also becomes a cultural hub reflecting my passion for art, fashion and music. This venture, which I tentatively call Té, which is Spanish for tea, will be part apothecary shop, part minimalist boutique and part tea-room café. It will be a place where culture and community intersect, where people can gather to experience positive culture from around the world, and where my own heritage can be shared and celebrated. And importantly, it will be a space that honors people of all abilities, ensuring accessibility, comfort, hospitality and inclusivity for everyone. As a millennial born on May 28, 1992, I carried a spark of the American dream, understanding both its allure and the disillusionment many people face in pursuit of it. I believe that everyone should have the opportunity to chase their dreams. My intentions are not to acquire wealth for wealth's sake, but to invest my energies in what I love and in giving back to my community. In closing, I want to express my deepest gratitude to International Hartford, believing in my vision. Together, I hope to see our community flourish and to contribute towards its growth and give back through my business. Thank you for this incredible opportunity, and I look forward to creating something special truly in Hartford.
Right on time. Thank you.
I have passed in favor of our chair, I was wondering if I could...
Yes, yes, you may now.
...read my place here. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Bilidou, councilpeople listening in at home. I'm Art Feldman, I'm the director of International Hartford, and I hope that we all take to heart the words of Ms. Harrison about the need that Hartford has to double or triple its investment in the small business sector compared to other cities like us with whom we are competing for talent and residents. So I wanted to do some math, not with regard to International Hartford, which you've already heard from our chair, board chair, and from a dozen or more clients of ours, of which there are, of whom there are many more. But, you know, to review what's happening sort of on a mega level in this category of other eligible services, non-public service, and, you know, although I know that Director Horowitz did go through some of the individual line items, which we weren't able to hear the justification because of the audio, I just want to observe that overall, that this year's proposal for this category adds some $560,000 for city agencies while cutting $126,000 from small business development. $126,000 from, um, small business development organizations like ours. Uh, it's, we go from a 51% share in this category of city department projects to 63% share of city department projects. And I think that the, uh, specific line items need to be viewed, uh, in that light, uh, whether we want to have, um, the agencies that produce, uh, the small businesses that encourage and, and build the small businesses that pay our taxes, whether they should get the support, or whether the departments in City Hall that spend the taxes, um, whether they are the ones who need the support. And this balance that, which was 50/50 last year is now, as I said, uh, is 60/40. And that's a major difference. The, uh, community development block grants are supposed to be for the community. It should not be a backstop for departments whose pet projects didn't make it into the city budget. We're giving them a second bite at the apple. I don't see them here appearing, defending what they want, but yet they're getting what they want. And although they may be technically eligible, it doesn't mean you have to fund them just because it's written in, in, in black and white type on a piece of paper. Um, and if you examine it and you decide that it's more important that the job producing, job, the business supporting agencies are really doing more good and are needed to support those other programs down the line, then you can make adjustments between, between those line items. And one of those adjustments that I ask you to make is our line item, which, um, was $110,000 last year and which has been trimmed this year. Uh, not as trimmed as some of the other economic development agencies, but nonetheless, while, you know, while these other departments are getting another 560,000, um, we are, we are getting, um, asked to do more for less. And I think you've seen tonight what kind of work we do with the dollars that you gave us last year. So I close by asking you to, to give us an increase to $125,000, which is a 14% increase. And you know, you will get paid the dividends in terms of new business in Hartford, retail spaces filled, jobs created, taxes paid, wealth built, and making us a more prosperous city and, and not a city that, where people have to depend on the government, but where they're supporting the government. So please give us a, please give us an increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felton. Uh, next to speak, Ivelis Correa Ojeda. Ivelis Correa Ojeda.
She, she might be back. She says she had to step away.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next to speak, Guy Newman.
He had to leave as well.
Uh, Devon Curry.
He had to leave as well.
Derek Small.
He's on dial, says he had to leave as well.
Barbara Foley.
I'm here.
You, you may go ahead.
Okay. Um, Barbara Foley, I'm, uh, President and Founder of the Ron Foley Foundation. We've been fighting pancreatic cancer for the past 15 years. I'm a resident of Stonington, Connecticut, and our office is in, uh, West Hartford, Connecticut at 1,000 Farmington Avenue. Um, it's a pleasure and an honor to be here tonight, um, to, to talk to you about, uh, what I, our work, my work and with, uh, Jen Dyer, Scott, uh, Miller and Angel of Edgewood. Um, we have, uh, this past year, we, so let me, let me start off by telling you a little bit about pancreatic cancer. Um, it is the third deadliest of all cancers. Um, it has the highest mortality rate, uh, of all major cancers and the lowest five-year survival rate. And when I read a few years ago that, um, Black Americans are more likely to get pancreatic cancer and more likely to die from it, I really wanted to do something about that and raise awareness. I learned that, um, that the Black community has, um, a fear of, of the medical, uh, professionals sometimes and, and maybe not even discussing family histories. I've learned this from Jen Dyer. And, um, I wanted to figure out a way to get this message to the people that needed to hear it. And, um, so I met, um, Angel of Edgewood and we, um, we just, we, we knew we wanted the same things. And, uh, together we formed the, um, Pancreatic Cancer Prevention for People of Color, um, with, uh, you know, with the Angel of Edgewood community and the Ron Foley Foundation community. And the reason it's so important to me is that, um, we have the opportunity to, uh, to get into communities, to, to talk to communities, educate them about the risks and symptoms of this very deadly disease, to get them to the proper treatment. Um, uh, Black Americans don't get into as many clinical trials, to direct people to the, the right, uh, course of, of action and, uh, to the right medical communities. Um, it's, it's a, I'm very proud of it. I, uh, the Angel of Edgewood community couldn't, I, I am so proud to be affiliated with, with them. Um, I, the work that I've seen is phenomenal. There, I have not met anybody that is more caring and cares more about her community. And, um, and that's why she embraced this. Um, you know, she has people that are ill or she knows, you know, you, we all have friends that have cancer. It's such an important thing. So together we're hoping to improve health outcomes. We want to combine our efforts to implement comprehensive health programs, to educate people, get the risks and symptoms out there. We want to work together and provide a social cohesion and, um, a community that will, will foster a strong sense of, of purpose and direction. And, um, we're, I'm really excited to be working with, with Jen Dyer this, this coming year. And we're starting actually this weekend. Um, but, um, it, it's the importance, the importance of the work that we're doing cannot be overstated. Um, it's life-saving work. The more people know about the disease, the more they talk to their, their relatives, their, their parents, their grandparents and get their family histories. The, the earlier, the, the more early prevention, the, the people will find out earlier, that is the only cure to this cancer, uh, early prevention. Um, and, and it, it, I can't, I cannot state how important that is and, and how devoted, uh, Jen Dyer is, is to this mission. Um, I, I can't say enough good things about Angel of Edgewood and, um, the path that we are on. Um, it requires a ton of work, unwavering commitment, clear vision for a better future, about making, it's all about making a real impactful change that will save lives and shape a stronger, healthier community for generations to come. And I don't know anybody that has more energy and more will, um, to do, to, to do this than, um, Angel of Edgewood and Jen Dyer.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you for allowing me to, to speak.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Foley. Uh, I'm gonna go back now to Ivelis Correa.
I'm here. Thank you. Oh, um, can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Right, um, thank you for allowing me to speak today. Today I am here supporting Angel of Edgewood and their mission to feed Hartford, to feed our people. Um, the city of Hartford has faced poverty since I was a child. And, um, feeding people in our city shouldn't be something controversial. It'd be, it should be something that we're dedicating our dollars to. Um, something that's proven to reduce crime, something that's proven to foster community, these meals that she has, the groceries that she hangs out, her back-to-school events. She gets people together in the most uncontroversial manner with a smile on her face and a hot meal. Um, I would hope that the city of Hartford does decide to support Angel of Edgewood and, um, dedicate more resources both to her and to, um, our public schools. Uh, there's so much more we could be doing and so much more she could be doing. And with almost nothing, she's turned, you know, cooking hot meals in her kitchen into something so much greater than we could have ever imagined. I admire her work. And there's so many times where I've thought, what would Jen Dyer do? What would Angel of Edgewood do? Um, I really admire her work. She's a hero of mine. She's a hero to so many people. And I would hope that the city council does decide to, um, fund her and her mission. People have faced hunger since I was born in the eighties in Hartford. Um, poverty isn't anything new. Our students, um, sometimes, some students don't go home to hot meals. Sometimes our students, and this is even pre-COVID. Um, our students, you know, don't always have the resources they need. Some people depend on her back-to-school giveaways. Some people, you know, depend on her. And, um, with someone so caring, with an organization that is so charitable, we should be doing anything we can to support and uplift their mission. And I would really hope that city council does hear everyone that has come out in support of her. Um, I hope to be more like her one day. Um, she's great. The, and my friends who volunteer there, they love it there. Um, going to her events, I love them. I love the way she brings the community together. I love the way that whenever you sit down with her in the city of Hartford, I love the way that everyone is able to relax. Everyone is able to talk about our city and see the best parts of it. And, um, she's one of the best parts of the city. I would hope that we all stand behind her. Um, thank you very much for that. And I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Correa. Uh, next to speak Tahira Drayton. Tahira Drayton?
I think she had to leave.
Okay, next to speak, Robin Jennings Bowen. All right, next to speak then, uh, Dawn Tyson.
Good evening, the Chair Committee and, um, the general public. My name is Dawn Tyson of West Hartford, Connecticut. I am a volunteer board member for the awesome, amazing organization, Angel of Edgewood, INC. I just wanted to speak about the work that we do and the services that we provide to the community, community and home, and the great resources that we have grown into from the past four years, starting, um, in Jen Dyer's kitchen to now growing into an operation that can feed thousands of families on a day-to-day basis. Angel of Edgewood is an all-encompassing, all-engaging, all-inclusive organizations whose vitality is what is needed in the city of Hartford and surrounding areas. We don't just serve the city of Hartford. We are serving populations that are coming from as far as Bridgeport, Stanford, North. They're coming here because they realize that we were really doing the work and providing things that the state owes to the community when, especially during the pandemic, that they did not have access to. The mission of the organization, which is to just feed everyone with the hearts of those, again, we have some of the most humble servants as volunteers, and we are led by an outstanding woman, um, in the form of Jen Dyer Miller, who gives her all. And so she gives her all, you want to match her energy and also give your all. Every effort that is made is made with the community in mind. To be on here, to ask for funding for something that should just be an automatic yes, because we're visible in the community, we are doing the work. And as I like to say, we are not just doing good work, we are doing God's work. And so with that being said, I thank you for your time and attention. I am asking for reconsideration and the allotment of funds for Angel of Edgewood and the mission that it, that it has, and that's just to feed the hungry and to do whatever needs to be done for wraparound services for our communities. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Tyson. Uh, next to speak, May Tyson.
She had to leave.
Vincent Miller.
He had to leave.
Keith Claytor.
Good evening. Um, what do you need? Uh, those are the words that you will always hear when you talk to Jen Dyer. Um, good evening. My name is Keith Claytor. I'm happy to speak today on behalf of Jen, um, and her organization, Angel of Edgewood. Over the past decade, Jen Dyer and Angel of Edgewood have offered hope and support in the Hartford community, uh, touching countless lives with their dedication and compassion. My own family is, uh, is a personal testament to the impact of, of this organization. Um, a few years ago, my son was diagnosed with a rare degenerative disease. Um, Angel of Edgewood stepped in, uh, to help in any way they could, literally. The word she said was, what do you need? Um, they, they provided resources to acquire physical therapy equipment for our family that we could get in our home that insurance just would not cover. Um, when we were faced with the challenge of providing our son with, um, mobility and freedom that he deserves, um, Jen Dyer stepped in and made phone calls and connected us to an organization that is in the process of, of building a wheelchair ramp, uh, so that we can give him the, the access to, to be able to go places, uh, just, just like he deserves. Um, this is, it, it wasn't just a physical structure, but it really just helped us give him, um, just, just the, the access that he needs. Uh, on a mi- on a macro level, um, Angel of Edgewood helps residents, um, helps residents of the Hartford area. Uh, she has consistently offered support services from meals to educational readiness with her successful, uh, back-to-school programs, as well as emergency assistance to those that need it most. Each initiative reflects her commitment to building a stronger, more resilient community. Her work has not only just provided, uh, immediate relief, but has also fostered a spirit of unity in our community that, uh, that strengthens everyone. As Jen seeks this grant, I truly, I really endorse her application. Uh, this funding will allow Angel of Edgewood to expand its reach and continue its invaluable work. Investing in Angel of Edgewood is investing in the future of this community. It's about ensuring that Hartford residents are not left behind and that everyone has the opportunity to thrive.
All right, uh, are you all set?
I'm all set.
Oh, thank, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, Vanessa Young.
She had to leave.
Oni- Onika, Onika Bowler.
She may have had to leave.
Yeah, I don't see you. Uh, Tasnuba Hook.
She had to leave.
Tonya Lawson.
She had to leave.
Latroya Shiper.
She may have had to leave as well.
Denise Shepherd-Harris.
Yeah, she had to leave.
Jasmine Hill.
She had to leave.
No, Denise Shepherd-Harris is here.
Yeah, I s- I just saw you, Denise. You were on mute.
Yes. I am here speaking on behalf of, um, the Angels of Edgewood Street also. What everyone failed to start out with is that Jen Di- Jen Dyer herself have health issues and have been in and out of a hospital. But as she does that, she still maintains the work for the Angels of Edgewood Street. She is always there, whether she's in the hospital or not. Children I fed, adults I fed, me and myself and my sister, some of us are elderly, disabled, and we're unable to get out into the community to receive the things we need. Jen Dyer always makes sure, just as Keith Claytor says, the first thing she said is, what do you need? She makes sure that she have people deliver it to you. She's worried about the students as far as the school. She's worried about the students as far as the school goes. Every year, she and her angels, and they are really Angels of Edgewood Street, make sure they have a give-back program, school supplies, food. My niece Latroya Shepherd, who had to leave, recently opened up her own daycare. Jen Dye is still helping her also. She provided the food, supplies and everything. She is always on board with whatever you need, whether it's health issues, if you don't have the knowledge or the know-how or the know-what to find out what could help you and where can help you. She will make sure she give you these answers to tell you who to speak to, who to go about and what is needed. So please, we are really asking that you guys send some funding her way. Her program has been great throughout this community since she started. Believe me, I've been with Jen Dye since she was young and I also had her children. She not only think about them, but she thinks about everyone. So you guys really need to realize that this is not a selfish act she's doing. This is an act for everyone. Most of the time, she puts herself last. So believe me when I say, she is reaching out to the community as much as possible. Even when she does not have the funds, she still makes a way for everyone and anyone that needs it to get it. So please, please make sure she gets the help she needs to continue what she's doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. uh, Shepherd Harris. Uh, I'm gonna go back now to O- Onika Bowler?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Onika Butler and I am here in support of Jen Dye Miller and, um, Angel of Edgewood and their incredible selfless acts in the community and beyond. Not only do they give of their time, but patience, support, empathy, generosity to those that are able and disabled by way of community event, food donation, holiday gifts.
Excuse me, Ms. Onika, give me one second. Uh, Ms. Denise, can you mute yourself, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Onika, can you, you may continue.
Okay. By way of community events, food donations, holiday meals, gifts, and awareness of need, the list continues. And the impact that they have had in the community as well as my family. As a single parent of two, one of which has autism and another one with a learning disability, we personally have benefited from the Angel of Edgewood organization, from their generosity and support in times when my family was in need. And with the commitment and kindness, they presented the smiles on the faces of my kids that others, I'm sorry, that others would, they were, they were surprised that others would be willing and so generous to assist that brought amazement and joy to their eyes as well as mine. And I'm sure this was the case for so many other families that they support. The financial backing and support to the Angel of Edgewood organization is not only desired, but it's imperative and necessary. Thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Bowler. Uh, next to speak is Jasmine Hill? Okay, don't see her on the screen. Uh, Troy Moore?
He may have had to leave.
Isaiah Tan?
He had to leave.
Okay, uh, Tomeka Cole?
Hi there.
Go ahead, the floor is yours.
Hi, uh, my name is Tomeka Cole and I'm the board chair of Angel of Edgewood. And I want to extend my gratitude to the city of Hartford council for providing me with this opportunity to speak on behalf of Angel of Edgewood and the incredible work that we do. Angel of Edgewood is a nonprofit, as many have said before me, um, dedicated to addressing the food insecurities and supporting our neighbors in need within the greater Hartford area. Our mission is to ensure that no one in our community goes hungry or without basic necessities. So we are especially focused on supporting families during critical times such as over the summer. This summer, there will be students that will not have access to meals they typically receive during the school year. And during these periods, it's our pantries that provide experiences and increase demand and we strive to meet the heightened need to our community. We run several vital programs, including the back-to-school initiative, where we provide backpacks and school supplies to students. Our coat drive ensures that children stay warm during the winter months and our holiday drive is specifically tailored to those special needs students, as just as Keith Claytor shared, and those with sensory issues. That population that's easily forgotten and almost always forgotten. I want to emphasize that, just as others have said, Jen Dye, our board members and volunteers are deeply committed and highly engaged in our mission. And they invest not only their time and their effort, but also their own resources to keep our organization running. Their dedication is truly remarkable. So, we said it, you've heard everyone else say, our executive director, Jen Dye, and her husband Vincent have been, they've gone years without a salary to ensure that our services continue uninterrupted. This level of commitment shows the vital role Angel of Edgewood plays in our community. So today, I'm here to ask you your support. I want you to reconsider. Angel of Edgewood, any monetary assistance or funding opportunities you can provide will be greatly appreciated. Our organization relies heavily on community support to continue our mission and your contributions can make a significant difference. So I thank you again for this opportunity to speak and for considering our request. I believe together with Jen Dye as our leader, we can ensure that the needs of our community are met and that the Angel of Edgewood can continue to serve those who rely on us. So thank you for providing me with this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Uh, next to speak, Andre- Andrea Gilberti?
Candice, um, Cardulus is speaking in her place. She had to leave.
I'm sorry, say the name. Who's speaking on her place?
Candice, C-A-N-D-I-S, Cardulus, K-A-R-D-I-L-U-S.
Okay, Candice, uh, the floor is yours.
Hello, my name is Candice Cardulus and I'm a resident of West Hartford, Connecticut. I've recently met, um, Jen Dye and learned about her nonprofit, Angel of Edgewood, not too long ago. Um, immediately seeing her vehicle, her food truck, her, her office space, um, located right here in West Hartford as she was doing her errands, um, I invited her to come to United Way of Connecticut to speak during our Juneteenth, uh, virtual and hybrid week. Um, today, Jen Dye was one of our speakers of our panelists and it was just so overwhelming to hear the many facets and learn about the many facets that Angel of Edgewood is actually doing and providing to the city of Hartford currently, even without funding. So if you can take a moment to imagine what she can do with the additional funding and how far she will be able to reach with your support, it's unfathomable. As you may know, you've seen Angel of Edgewood in the media, um, for the last past two weeks, right? This is her time of need. Um, this is a rallying point for the city of Hartford to come and say, we see the great works that you are doing, providing to the community and that we are here to help and sustain you. Um, though her nonprofit was a victim of burglary, not once but twice, um, still, she was denied funding. And, and I'm trying to have a hard time, I'm having a hard time understanding, um, why she's not receiving the support, um, when she's receiving funding from other places that see the great works that she's doing, but the city that she's really working hands-on, blood and sweat and, and tears for, um, has denied her access. Uh, so it, it leaves us with a question. What, what is the barrier, correct? Um, as you may know, again, going back to the media, um, platforms to understand of the impact of what just happened and how she has had to respond, her and her team have been in, you know, the parking lot trying to sleep and trying to monitor her, her building, that she was able to not only rent, but come to a place where her nonprofit now owns the space. That there is a victory in itself. Um, I've learned that Angel of Edgewood is not only a, a nonprofit going out to do social service work, but they are culturally competent. They are thoughtful in who and how they serve. Um, they are not serving one sector or, or one culture, but they are serving whomever is in need. The magnitude of the back-to-school event that she has put on year after year at the Yard Goat Stadium, um, is a testament to that. There is certainly media around her good work. It is not just, um, a community event of come to get a backpack and that is it. She has created an equitable space for all to come with the same playing field and everything is free. No one is selling anything. Everyone has access to that event. Not only that, but she has had a partnership with Lego where they are helping to sponsor to give specialized Legos for autistic children and children with disabilities. Just knowing that she has had those resources stolen from her in the recent past two weeks is heartbreaking and devastating. Angel of Edgewood needs your support now. And I do hope that you will reconsider, especially with a panel of the speakers who have come before me, um, to rise to the occasion and say, Angel of Edgewood, we see all the work that you have done in our community. We are here to stand with you and help you continue to do your great work. So I thank you for your time and I thank you for the honor of speaking today.
Thank you, Ms. Candice. Uh, next to speak is Simona Dowdy?
Hello, good evening. Apologies for being on camera. I am in transition. My name is Simona Zanatta Dowdy of Simona Zanatta Consulting. I also represent the Northern Connecticut Black Nurses Association. I am a registered nurse, bachelor's prepared and I am here in support of Jen Dye Scott Miller and Angel of Edgewood. Um, I, 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 a few things that I've heard. It is surprising she hasn't gotten funded. Yes. It is surprising the amount of funding that the city of Hartford allocates to, um, individuals and organizations like Angel of Edgewood that are actually tackling social determinants of health. And when we talk about social determinants of health, we're talking about access to food, fresh food, good food, nutritious food, um, transportation, housing, clothing. These are things that Jen Dye Scott Miller assists with. These are the things that she has been providing to our community on her own dollar. Um, little backstory, I reconnected with, um, Jen Dye when Hartford Healthcare was doing, um, some outreach in the community and, um, Greg Jones introduced me to her. And to my surprise, I already knew her. I used to sit in her kitchen and her mom used to hot comb my hair and, um, I was friends with her sister. And I was surprised that she still was living in Hartford, but also that she was still on Edgewood Street. Like, if we know the area, it is a very busy and sometimes very dangerous area. But Jen Dye stays there and she continues to support her community. Um, so she's doing the job of so many people in our state level that we should be addressing. This woman here is doing it for free for the community. Um, and I feel as though that we should, we should, we need to support her, like this funding should be given to her. Um, when I met Jen Dye, I went to her warehouse and I saw what she had done from, from, starting from clicking in her kitchen to this massive warehouse with people that have donated to her based on her merit and who she is as a person and the, the work that she's been doing in the community. And I'm walking through this with her and she, and I was like, God, there's so much work to be done, you know, it's, everything is, is looking it's a race. She's like, I'm gonna apply for grants, there's gonna be a kitchen over there. And the vision of what this woman wants to do and continue to do for our community just came to light, you know? When somebody tells you a story, you can actually see a picture. I, I saw the picture. And I became very excited for her. And then when I hear that she hasn't got the funding, it's, it's surprising to me. Um, that we can't see the work that this woman is really doing and really deserve. I mean, the Yard Goat Stadium recognizes it. When we did the backpack event, we actually worked with Jen Dye, with Hartford Healthcare, we did a backpacking event. And the excitement behind the people that work in healthcare, coming out to the community to take care of individuals and, and help them from, from, you know, having these social determinants of health. Because we're not only giving backpacks, she's got bags of food, she's got nutritious information. We're talking about breast cancer, we got a mammogram truck. This woman gathers people in the community and you, and brings the resources to them to address these social determinants. And if we know about social determinants of health is one of the biggest sucks of this system. Because when somebody can't eat, I worked in the hospital for a very long time, they can't eat, they're gonna come to the emergency room. They're gonna sit in that emergency room because they need to be evaluated. Whether they have insurance or not, it's open door, they have to be evaluated. So those funds that now the state level is gonna pay through Medicaid or through, um, whatever resources that can be provided back to that hospital to pay for this individual when maybe they just needed a sandwich and Jen Dye provides that. So when we think about numbers, you, you saying that you, you have the funding there to help with administrative purposes, will then now help her gather that information because everybody else sees it. So then this administrative dollars that is there as well, that is available, help this, this woman now build this organization that is providing food, providing clothing and helping the community and just addressing those social determinants of health. As me, as a registered nurse and battling, resources are lacking. Things that, all of those resources that she provides that we bring out to the community are lacking. So when you have somebody that's actually giving it and available to give it for free, we need to find a way. Um, you know, there is something to be said about the power of choice, but there's something more to be said about the power of decision. And you, um, council members have that power in your hands to make that decision, to give, you know, this funding to this woman and her organization, Angel of Edgewood, that's providing so much to our community. I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dowdy. Uh, next to speak, Sheila Copeland? All right, um,
She had to leave.
Next to speak, Stacy McDaniel?
Hello. My name is Stacy McDaniel. I am a citizen of, um, Hartford, Connecticut. I am speaking on the behalf of the Angel of Edgewood, Jen Dye Scott Miller. I am also a volunteer for the services that Jen Dye renders to all the citizens and the people in the area of the city of Hartford. Jen Dye has a service that services the people in the community, make sure the people has food to eat, clothes on their back and all this is free. Please consider and reconsider funding the Angel of Edgewood for this grant. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. Uh, next to speak is Sonia Deskormier?
This is Sonia.
Okay, we're gonna go back to her in a few minutes. Uh, next to speak, Mary Young?
She had to leave. Bruce Carter is in her place.
Okay, uh, Sonia, I think you wrote on the chat, we cannot hear you. You're on mute. Uh, next to speak, Regina Albi?
I think she had to leave.
Melanie Hardy?
She had to leave.
Toni Const- Constabille?
He had to leave, but Bruce Carter can go.
Uh, let me call the last person before, uh, Andrea Shepherd Williams? Well? Jesse Ewart?
Jessamar, I think he had to leave.
Seven zero one. Andrea Shepherd Williams is coming in now. She's in the hospital, but she would like to speak. Seven zero one. Andrea Shepherd Williams is coming in now. She's in the hospital, but she would like to speak.
Is she there present with you, ma'am? Okay, uh, Mr. Bruce, uh, I cannot see the last name.
Carter.
Uh, Bruce Carter. Uh, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, uh, I was on an hour ago, but had to go to a meeting, but I'm back on it. Thank God I made it in time. If you have not lived under a rock in the past few years in the Hartford area, you've heard about the Angel of Edgewood. Uh, we talk about, uh, serving community and taking care of those who are around us. Starting, you were citizens that ran out to the entire Har- Greater Hartford area, expanding as far as Clayville, East Granby, uh, East Windsor, blessing people with food substances in the food desert. And since that time, it's grown into an organization which is probably one of the most effective nonprofits in the Greater Hartford community. Doing free services, not just food, back to school programs, um, programs that are, that are advancing the causes of women, young people, coke drives. You know, things, and everything, you know, it's, it's, it's goals, uh, and one of the things is, they get funding from the state in some situations and some from H F P G. However, when you're doing such a magnificent work within the city, I think you should benefit from the city where you're blessing people. Particularly if you work in an area that has one of the poorest zip codes in the country. We have two of the poorest in zero six one two zero and zero six one one two. Those zip codes are two of the poorest in the country. And I know we just passed a, 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 a law or whatever bill in the state that's dealing with concentrated poverty. Well, this is one of the ways to fix those problems. If you begin to get people with better self-esteem, to lift them up in who they are, to build them as people, you could then find out that they can do better in life in general. So I would admonish you that to, 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 to make, to fund the Angel of Edgewood and what they're doing, because it's not just for now, it's for generational development. And so I think that them as a group has done a great deal. And you mentioned earlier in your, uh, the earlier, what's her name was regarding the nonprofits and being able to handle the funds correctly. She's put together a dynamic board directors that can do just that. The chairman of the board was with United Way, with Boys and Girls Clubs. She knows exactly what she's doing with the board development situation. We have city council members and people who know how to handle and oversee a board. So therefore you have the right people in place, the right heart, the right attitude, and it's the right time and need to bless such a group as the Angel of Edgewood. So therefore I think this is one you should really consider funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. It seems like, uh, let me allow for An- Andrea Shepherd Williams. I think, yes, go ahead, Ms. William, uh, Shepherd Williams.
I can speak highly of Zendaya. She has been working not only for the North End, she works in all demographic areas in Hartford, helping the people with any needs that, that become about. Not only feeding them, she clothes them, she works with them, she, she get them in contact with any kind of organization that they would need help with. She, her, her agency would be a great agency for you guys to give grants and funds to help her because she's always looking out for the people. She even go out of her own pocket to do what she do. And I recommend her highly.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Andrea.
You're welcome.
Uh, I will try one more time, Sonia, uh, when you're having technical difficulties. Uh, Sonia, can you unmute yourself at this time? Okay, so, um, Sonia, you are more than welcome to, uh, to send the, uh, your testimony, your comments in writing. And then now, I think we're down to now Zendaya Scott Miller.
Um, there's Yolanda Harris Potter, Yolanda Potter.
Uh, yes, I'm calling those that I, that didn't list themselves, uh, right at the end.
Okay, um, can I go last?
Uh, who, who else? Uh, I, it's on the screen that I did not call. Yolanda, is there anybody else?
Um, Yolanda Potter.
I think Yolanda is the only person. Uh, so Yolanda Porter, you may, you may go ahead now.
Okay.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm, I'm, it's a long, it's like it's still afternoon.
I'm right on time, right on time. I mean, I don't, I don't.
Ms. Yolanda, uh, can you for a second, uh, Ms. Denise, can you mute yourself, please? Thank you. Uh, Ms. Yolanda, you may go ahead now, please.
Yeah, so I mean, five minutes is just absolutely not enough time to, to talk about Angel of Edgewood. Um, honestly, I was enlisted by Zendaya. Um, I'm a native of Hartford, but I live currently in Manchester, Connecticut. Um, I'm a service provider in the, um, Greater Hartford area, actually statewide, and I work with homeless individuals. Um, last person called to me, Zendaya, when she found out that I worked with homeless individual was calling me in the middle of the night to house the family that was sleeping in the quarter pot. So initially when I, I, I met with Zendaya and the individuals that she wanted me to serve, I thought her program was funded. I saw Angel of Edgewood had full funding, um, because I seen the work that she was doing in the community. And it was until a year later, when I sat with her, when she was talking about, you know, applying for HUD funding and different grants, I found out that she was doing this independently out of her own pocket, which is sad, saddening, because I work for an agency that get HUD funding for almost the same exact thing. Um, and her reach is far more greater than the reach that we have in the community. She's reached more people by herself than we have within agency. And, um, to see that she's not funded is saddening. I grew up in Hartford. Hartford has always had food insecurities, um, for a long time, as long as I can remember. And I'm well over forty years old and we've always had food insecurities in Hartford and it has gone unnoticed. Um, her reaching community is beyond any reach that I've seen from an individual that has not been funded by some entity. Um, and I think we owe her as a community, um, as providers to, to fund this project, to build what we, we wanna see. And as far from generational wealth, it's just basic needs of people living in the community. And I think we owe it to her as she's been doing this work independently for so long, to kind of support her and support our own people. Because most of the people that's going through the struggle are, are our own people, our own family members, um, that we can't help. And she's done it again, independently with no funding, with a whole lot of resources from, um, via donations. So I just wanna back her and, and support her and hope that this project gets funded. Because outside of the good work that she's doing and the good work that we're getting paid to do, um, again, she enlisted me outside of my normal job hours, work duties, and I'm always gonna come with her, fight with her, come prepared to do whatever it takes to build the Hartford community without the resources. But if she had resources, she could reach a lot more people. And, and I'm gonna back her a hundred percent. I'm gonna continue to take her phone calls at two o'clock in the morning to help feed people, house people, clothe people, and take care of people. So I, I wanna go on record saying I support her and everything she's standing for and hopefully this go around, she get funded. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Uh, now, um, Ms. Zendaya Scott Miller.
Um, thank you. I wanna first start by saying that, um, one, I appreciate everyone's, um, kind words, like I'm holding back, um, tears. But, um, I do wanna start off by saying that there's a difference in knowing somebody and knowing of somebody. And there's a lot of people who think they know me, but they really truly don't know me at all. And that's the first hurdle that we have to get over as a community is stop, um, supporting people because of what they heard. And one thing, um, that people don't know is the support that I have did not start four years ago. The support that is there is because I, my family, my grandparents who raised me, um, on Edgewood Street, this is embedded in our blood. My grandparents' house was the house that everybody in the community could come to for whatever needs they had. So when my grandmother died in April of oh seven, and her last words, as it was, what my grandfather's last words, was to never turn my back on people and to never let anybody go hungry. And so I did that. And I had a lot of people who wanted me to do the work that I'm doing now at this level, but I wasn't ready. And so as much as they wanted me to be, I had to do it in God's time, not my time. And so when this opportunity did become available and our organization grew and took off, these people aren't supporting us because this is a new fad. I hear people say, you know, she's not the first one to, to be feeding people. You're absolutely right. I've been feeding people over forty-eight years and that's why I have the support that I do. Um, the stories can, can go on all night. I'm really sad that everybody did not get to speak, um, this evening. But I can say, and I'm gonna say it openly and honestly, one of the deepest hurtful pains, um, that I have as someone in the community who loves my community is the community that I serve, Hartford don't help me feed Hartford. Hartford has never helped me feed Hartford. And I'm not talking about the support from the council members who, um, use community dollars at their discretion to help with events. I'm talking about to make sure that our organization is sustainable and the state sees it. I have state support. I have federal support. Do you know, know how good it felt when I got a phone call yesterday from Senator Blumenthal asking me how I was doing? And that he'd be by in the next week or so to check on the building and see what needs to do next. Same thing with Governor Lamont, same thing with Matt Ritter, but I can't say that for my mayor. I can't say that for the person that I checked off the ballot for. And it's really, really sad. I have a van. It got decals all over it. So a lot of people that have the same funding I got for that van, but they're in Range Rovers, they're in Mercedes, all sorts of things. I've got opportunities to rent houses, buy houses outside of where I am. Then there did all that. This is my home. I am also poor. Our organization is poor to a certain extent because I have turned down a lot of funding because I didn't sell out. I get tired of hearing what I'm doing for the Hispanic community. I get tired of hearing, well, if I help you, you're not gonna do this, that, and the other in the black community. I am struggling because I refuse to allow somebody to change who I am. I was raised in a diverse household on the North End. My grandfather worked and retired in the school systems on the North End and my grandmother from Prince Tech, but it didn't matter who needed what. They came from whatever side of town to one forty-nine Edgewood Street, right next door. Everybody knows I'm in Ace's house. That's my landlord, but it's right next door to my grandparents' house, the house that I was born and raised in. I didn't receive any phone calls from people in my community, um, from my city that I should have received phone calls from. I'm not talking about those who I have personal relationships with. I'm talking about those who should have stepped up and just did it as the right thing. As I've been sleeping outside every night, um, risking my safety, arguing with my husband, sneaking out while he goes to sleep, like, don't leave out this house. It's too much. You can't go over there doing, you know, this, that, and the other. But I have to protect what I've worked for. And, and I'm scared to let something else happen to it because I know who supported me getting there, but I know who's not supporting me and helping me keep what I have. I sacrifice a lot. As many people have already said tonight, my medical issues, my family's medical issues. People don't know that, uh, February seventh, my daughter had part of her breasts removed. And while my daughter was on the operating table for five and a half hours, instead of sitting in the waiting room, I left during that time to come bring people food because I know when I can be productive. So I left to come help people until the hospital called me and told me that she was out of surgery and in the waiting room. I got Hartford Hospital that just gave me ten thousand dollars to buy food because no one will help. We got our first food truck to go out into the community to serve in the evening weekends and holidays where nobody else is open or available to make sure that people are getting hot meals. I know how to serve my community because I am the community. And if none of this goes nowhere, it's okay. Because as much as I cuss, as much as I fuss, as much as I get upset, I know the God that I serve. And if I depended on people, how they feel about me, how they view me, how they look at me, I would not be here to this day. I started Angel of Edgewood passing out food on my front porch, giving out boxes of USDA truckloads of food with a feeding tube and a drain in my stomach, one under the left breast and one under the right. So that's the stuff that ticks me off that people don't know. This is not a fad. This is a purpose. This is a passion. And I'm, I'm tired of, of fighting. I really am. People don't know what it takes to start and maintain an organization who are doing things ethically. I'm not a cash app flyer organization. Our taxes are up to par with the CPA. I'm working on funding now for audit, audits and so many other things. And that's why I get the respect that I do. And I didn't pull this stuff out of my head. I worked for Hartford Schools. I worked for some of the best of the best. I was Tim Sullivan's secretary. I was Sandy Cruz Serrano's secretary. I worked for so many prominent people. I was Paula Gilberto's secretary. I was Susan Dunn's secretary. But I don't feel like I need to run around name dropping to get the work, the respect that I should have. And it's okay. But I, we decided to take this night while we had the attention of those who could do something and help us to pour it all out. But, but I, I just, I won't keep doing it. I, I won't keep doing it. We will continue to work and rally together. And I've got a lot of people who support me, many who had to get off the call tonight. But, you know, I, I really, it, it really needs to be a change in the city. I, I, I don't have much more to say. I have a press conference, um, to get ready for at eleven o'clock in the morning. Senator Doug McCory, um, we just cashed a ten thousand dollar check. The security company will be coming out tomorrow to start some of the work, which is a very expensive job. And that's maybe half the money because we're in an older building, um, and it takes a lot of wiring and different things. Uh, wifi won't work in that building and other hurdles, but we're, we're gonna be okay. But I, I needed to take tonight with my biggest supporters to let you all know how we are making it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Zendaya.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else on the screen that I did not call that would, that would like to speak? I don't see anybody.
Hold on, hello, hello? I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, yes.
Well, hi, my name is Greta Green. I've been on and listened to all of, you know, the, you know, speak, you know, speeches and so forth. But, um, I'm just wanna quickly come out to say, I'm here to support the Angels of, um, Edgewood. And I know Zendaya personally, and she does stuff for the heart, even on her worstest days. So y'all should, and every, everybody else that spoke about her, her, um, legacy and her, what she's doing, her mission, that, it, it's no long paragraph needed. I'm gonna leave it right there. So I just pray and hope that y'all really do fund it, please. There is really needed in our community everywhere. And thank you, and everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Can you, can you say your name again, ma'am?
It's Greta, G-R-E-T-A.
Uh, last name?
Green, like the color.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Green.
You're welcome. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, too. Seeing that there is, uh, nobody else, uh, that would like to speak on, on this item, um, I will be calling this meeting, um, adjourned. So thank you, everyone. Have a good night.